How's it going today?
I'll watch it. No, no, late came on. I'm okay.
Yeah.
You are ready also? I'm ready to proceed.
Okay. All right, good evening, everyone. It is time to call the, uh, we have our council meeting in the city of Arlington to order. It is, uh, we'll call it six thirty-five September eighteenth, two thousand seventeen. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel and I'll be presiding. Would you please join me in the place of lead? I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, again, welcome to everyone. Here's our roll call. Councilmember Collins, councilmember Hattledale, councilmember Yashewski, and councilmember Batchery.
Here.
All councilmembers present. Also, at the table here on my left is interim administrator Elbowlock, and on my right is the interim Arneson. Uh, in the audience, Jason Femright, representing Goldman Mayne, Kurt Mayne, representing the Arlington Enterprise, and we have three guests this evening. Uh, Ms. Doling, Ms. Rohr, and...
Mrs. Rohr.
Mrs. Rohr. Wendy, right?
Correct.
All right. Um, the girls are mayor Lutheran students, and we welcome them here. Do you want to say anything at this time, or... Yeah, I assume this is part of your curriculum that you are to visit.
This is not it.
It's a project. All right, well, we're glad you included us in the project. Welcome again. Okay, uh, moving on then to the item number three, approve the agenda and agenda additions. Are there any revisions in the agenda as you had in mind?
G and H are revisions.
G and H are additions to the consent agenda. So if you've got that, you've got the most recent one.
I'll make motion to approve the agenda as revised.
I'll second it.
Motion by councilmember Batchery, second... I guess turn that on. Motion by councilmember Batchery, second by councilmember Hattledale to approve the agenda as revised. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion's carried. Moving on then to the consent agenda. Um, consists of the following items. Approval of the September fifth regular meeting and September fifth special work session meetings. B, approval of bills. C, approval of publication, the columbarium brochure, which you were all furnished in your packets. Item D, approval of the one to four day temporary on sale liquor license for Arlington dugout, LLC. Item E, approval of temporary road closure, Sibley East Homecoming Parade. Item F, approval of temporary closure of parking stalls in Main Street Municipal Parking Lot for Sibley County. That would be for the Arlington Historical Society, rather than Sibley County Historical Society. Uh, item G, approval of the resignation of Ricky Schmidt for first responder effective September first. And item H, approval of application to Prairie Lake Regional Arts Council, fiscal agent for Arla Dazzle. Okay, motion is in order to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I, uh, Mr. Mayor, I just have a couple of questions on the bills.
Okay, would you want to move that, uh, to new...
Maybe just a quick...
Quick, all right.
There's one for a transmission replacement or repair on the two thousand one Chevy pickup truck. That Brough Motors for thirty-four hundred, eight dollars and twenty-five cents. I know we just had a transmission done on a Chevy truck...
Oh.
Recently, I'm hoping it's not the same one.
Was it a Chevy truck, or was it a car that was at Brough's?
It's a Chevy, oh-one Chevy.
Oh-one.
I guess I didn't...
PW, Public Works, I would imagine that's a truck.
Yes. Yeah, I believe it was a pickup.
We did just have something done, I remember that.
Yeah.
At Pro Auto, I believe.
Right, right, and that was like...
Within the last...
Late winter, early spring, something like that.
Um, I was thinking it was last fall, almost a year ago.
Other than...
Yeah, but I don't, I don't know. Something we should...
And then the other thing, Midwest Playground, um, three hundred dollars for installing the slide at Frenzel Park. I thought we were gonna do that in-house and...
The intent was to do it in-house. We did not receive the correct instructions, and so then when Kirby did some follow-up to try to get a hold of the instructions, contacted some of his peers, to find out that most often other cities in this type situation will have, will pay someone to come in and install it.
Okay.
Um, it just creates, it works a lot easier and it gets it installed a lot better and faster, and so, um, he did contract that out versus attempt to do that in-house.
Okay.
Um, what do we want to do about the bill from Brough's then on the transmission work? Does it say what kind of vehicle?
It is a two thousand one Chevy Silverado. Um, they, the customer requests the transmission replaced, they removed the old transmission, flushed transmission cooler and lines, installed the transmission, replaced all necessary seals and gaskets, tapped off fluids, and road tested.
I don't recall which pickup that was that we, that Pro Auto did the one on, but it...
Um...
We did not take a vote on this yet, so just wanted to clear that up if, if we want to...
If we, yeah, we could pull it.
Pull that, just pull that one particular item?
Yeah.
I'd just like to pull till we clarify, just to make sure it wasn't the same truck we did.
Right.
Yeah.
Because then there's some other action needs to be taken, I would think.
Right, right, because there's...
Well, even if they're, even if we did pay somebody else to do it, they, they still did the work. I mean, Brough's did.
We're still gonna have to pay him.
We're still gonna have to pay him.
We're still gonna have to pay Brough's.
I would say, I would say that I'd like to look into that, however, I feel that we should still pay Brough's. It's not their fault if it was a rework or something else, or...
Because it wasn't done by Brough's.
Initially, it was not.
If it was done initially by Brough's, I would say with overpayment.
Yeah.
But since it wasn't, I don't know.
Well, we don't even know if it's the same vehicle.
I don't know if it's the same truck, or if it's, do we have two Chevy?
I don't know, I wasn't around here last fall, so I don't know.
I don't, I don't remember.
Okay.
But we're almost penalizing Brough's by not paying them.
I tend to, I tend to agree. They did the work to put the, but we should have some recourse if there's a two-year warranty on it or something.
I think there was a three-year fifty thousand mile warranty on the transmission from Pro Auto. I mean, it was a, it was a good warranty on it.
Well, then I would say, I mean, we have them pay the bill that we just paid Brough's then, as far as that goes, if that was the case.
They reimburse the city.
You'd probably just get parts, would be my guess.
Pardon?
Would you probably get parts only on a warranty?
Okay.
No, I think it was parts and labor.
Was it?
Well, let's move along, we'll just, we'll check into that one, and would you agree about, as far as just, you know, Brough's did put in the work, or would you...
Yeah, well, I just, I just wanted to see as being twice for...
Right.
I understand where you're coming from.
And it might be a different truck, I don't know.
No, but it's worth checking into, but...
Okay, uh, the agenda, consent agenda has been read, a motion by Yashewski, second by councilmember Batchery to, uh, approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried. We'll move on to citizens addressing the council. Is there anyone wishes to address the council this evening? All right, we'll move then on to announcements.
Several announcements. Um, a reminder, next week is the last Farmer's Market, so the one that was scheduled for today was canceled due to the weather. Um, and a reminder that the city administrator applicant public reception is next Monday from noon to one here at the community center. Um, that has been advertised and, um, trying to get a good representation of the public, so hopefully we'll have a good turnout for that. Um, and then the, in light of that, because we will be having applicants, or we'll have staff then participating in the interview process that afternoon, um, we will not have anybody to be at the front desk, and so we will be closing the office on September twenty-fifth from twelve-thirty to four, and then we'll try and promote that as well, so folks know. Um, you have the website to the League of Minnesota City's regional meetings if interested in attending. Um, a reminder that the, we're looking for volunteers for the tree planting on the thirtieth. We are still in need of volunteers, so if anybody is interested, they can contact, um, city offices and we'll get them on the list. And then promotion of the Arlington Fire Department Fall Block Party, which will be coming up, um, on the fourteenth of October.
All right.
I have not forget how the, the ambulance, um, event went Friday night, but I know there was a steady stream of, um, folks, and the building smelled really nice.
The food was very good.
So, yeah.
I would tell a little over six hundred.
Okay.
I was an ambulance man.
There were some very positive comments on Facebook, I noticed, from a few people that had attended, so that's, that was a good thing.
Yeah, it was excellent.
All right, move on to communications.
Several reports for you. You have the August monthly financial report, the August building permit report, police reports for the month of August, and then the community development newsletter for September.
Okay, any questions on those various reports? It is, um, I noticed in the monthly newsletter, Sibley County Community Development, they, it's really gratifying to see that, you know, the fact is we have a very big shortage of daycare providers in the county, and it's, it's nice to see, uh, school districts and, uh, and the county recognizing that and trying to, uh, you know, get more information on it and trying to, uh, somewhat deal with the, with the issue. So, um, and that, that information was in the Sibley County newsletter. All right, uh, we are up to item number eight, ordinances, first reading ordinance three-one-three.
Uh, we're now at chapter thirty of thirty-one total chapters. Uh, chapter thirty is utilities, electric, storm sewer, septic sewer, and water. Uh, it's done, but, uh, we didn't email it out. Uh, it ended up being quite a long chapter, as I had anticipated. So, my secretary is now, uh, providing page numbers and indexing those to the, uh, section headings, so it'll be easier to find, for example, uh, section thirty point one zero one. There actually is a hundred and five sections in this, uh, chapter.
Wow.
So, uh, the council will, uh, find it transmitted to you, uh, before the end of the week. Uh, following that, we have left only, uh, chapter thirty-one, the zoning ordinance, and that will be by far the longest chapter of all, and, uh, we will certainly, uh, index that with page numbers, uh, and anticipate that should be ready, um, by the second meeting in October, and then we can, uh, with, with any changes, uh, that may take place, should be then ready to vote on ordinance three thirteen as a whole, which would be to adopt the thirty-one chapter code.
Okay, any questions on that?
Just a comment, we, I'd like to get that all, a paper, the whole thing, and a couple...
And I think Vicki Palm Plune is working on that.
Okay, and then a couple of weeks or whatever to review the whole thing before.
Sure.
And it's gonna be some interesting reading.
It's gonna be fun, won't it?
Well, I'm sure you've all been reading it, as it's been going along, right?
Right, right.
I'm, I'm...
But it's, it'll be nice to go through it when it's all together, whatever, to see...
And, and so you can anticipate, I'm compiling it in written form in my office, of course, and, uh, it's going to be three ring binders, so...
Okay.
About that much.
Oh, really?
But, the ordinances were more like this.
Right.
Yeah.
Definitely making progress.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, move on to item nine, resolutions, proclamations, Arbor Day proclamation.
Yeah, in the past, there's been a proclamation made prior to, uh, our recognition of Arbor Day. Last year, just prior to the fall tree planting, the city council did pass, approved a, um, proclamation, and so we're looking to do the same this year. There is, um, rather than the, the, um, listing of it being oh-one, it should be proclamation oh-two. That is the only change, but other than that...
So this is an annual thing?
Yes.
And, uh, looks like being, it is a resolution, we should do a roll call vote on this, and this would be endorsing the proclamation for Arbor Day. Um, I typically will be, I think in the past I have read it on Arbor Day before the event itself, so, you know, when people arrive and are ready to plant the trees, we'll take about five minutes and give a little introduction. So, is there someone who wished, wishes to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce resolution twenty seventeen dash oh-two Arbor Day proclamation, September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, and I'm not gonna read it.
I'll second it.
Okay, councilmember Highland introduced the resolution of Arbor Day proclamation twenty seventeen dash zero-two, and it was seconded by councilmember Batchery, and we'll go by roll call vote. Councilmember Hattledale.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchery.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowal.
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, resolution is adopted. Um, moving on to item ten, unfinished business, Johnson Controls update.
The council had authorized me to, uh, have a, uh, outside law firm evaluate, uh, the possibility of litigation with Johnson Controls over our, uh, somewhat defective city streetlight system. Uh, they'd given me a rough estimate that they would have a response to us, uh, by what would have been the end of last week, and, uh, I, uh, did, uh, contact, uh, them this morning, and the attorney who's working on this, uh, is out of the office until Thursday on another case, uh, but through his secretary, he, uh, assured me he was gonna get back to me on Thursday morning. Uh, I don't have any input of any kind to pass on to the council, but it sounds like, uh, he's pretty much done with his task, so hopefully I'll have a full report by the next meeting.
Okay, any questions or comments on that topic? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. Item eleven, approved, deny, partial pay estimate, uh, number one to Jewel Contracting Inc. in the amount of thirty-one thousand five oh-nine and fifty-one cents.
As we would ask that it be contingent upon receiving all the required documentation and paperwork required. I'm not sure if Jason's received that yet, did that at this point?
Yeah, if you wanna step up, sure, please do.
This is partial pay estimate number one. If you've received the signed copies back at City Hall, that would be the appropriate documentation for this, and there was no stormwater compliant, or storm reporting due to the size of that project, so with that, we could go ahead and just approve it if they've, if they've gotten you the signed pay estimates.
Yes, which they have.
Now, this is a partial, uh, what, what isn't done yet, or what is...
Well, this was just what they accomplished in, uh, August, so it was just some of the first work, and the, and now they've gotten further along.
Okay.
Um, all of the underground work is done, the manholes have been replaced, they've been patched. Essentially, what's remaining is the lining portion of it, which again was a major component of the project, but, um, they are scheduled to do that here this month. I just saw one of the trucks mobilized in today.
Okay.
And I think they were gonna start tomorrow, didn't know what today's weather did to them, but I would expect them to be starting that this week.
And that's the slip lining, I think it's called?
That's right.
Does Jewel do their own, or is that subbed out?
Nope, it's, it's subbed out.
Okay.
Yep, Lamedian Sons is the subcontractor.
Is there not part of, uh, the twenty fifteen project that also is to be slip lined?
It is.
And they'll do that, I would presume, at the same time?
That's included.
That's included in this...
That's in this project, yes.
Yeah, all right.
Now, this project is over on Freedom Drive, is that what we're talking about?
It is, yeah, that was the, the storm sewer, um, rerouting that we did down there in Freedom Drive was a extremely challenging reroute due to, you know, a number of utilities underneath there, and the size of it, and the depth, but everything's been completed and, and repaved.
I noticed in a few areas, they, uh, they did some hydro seeding, you know, filling with black dirt and hydro seeding. What happens in spring if that's settled? Do they come in and, uh, is part of the, part of their payment withheld until that time?
We will, I will not want to close out the project until all turf has been reestablished, so that more than likely will run into next year just due to the timing of things, so...
Right, right.
Um, retaining that five percent can retainage.
Okay, yeah.
Until the, until the grass comes back, you know, and if there's any settling, you know, we'll have a two-year warranty after we close out the project.
Okay.
Say, you know, if they settled along Freedom Drive there where they were working, that would be their responsibility to come back in and repair those.
Okay. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve partial payment, um, number one to Jewel Contracting in the amount of thirty-one thousand five fifty-one cents.
Second it.
Motion by councilmember Batchery, second by councilmember Hattledale to approve the partial payment estimate number one, Jewel Contracting, in the amount of thirty-one thousand five hundred nine dollars fifty-one cents. Is there any further questions, comments?
It did come under their estimate, which is good.
Well, it's...
Well, they, the estimate was thirty-three one sixty-seven, and that's thirty-one, so...
They're withholding sixteen hundred dollars.
The entire project's a hundred and sixty-four thousand.
Right, but the information that they sent...
Okay.
Were completed through.
Sure.
So, yeah.
Councilmember Highland, did you have a question?
Oh, no, I just...
You're just looking at the same...
They're withholding the, um, the sixteen hundred and fifty dollars of five percent.
That's what's gonna, yeah, yeah, in the end, that will be withheld until...
Right.
Next spring, probably.
Gotcha.
All right, all in favor of this, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Item twelve, approve or deny partial pay estimate number four to OMG Midwest Inc. in the amount of four hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred, or three hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-one cents. Jason?
So this, uh, pay estimate, uh, partial pay estimate number four, again, it's for the, the amount of work that they've completed to date. This was work completed on the twenty-fifth, and, uh, included all of that work up until that point. Um, you know, as we know, there's been some work past that, some paving, some concrete work, uh, with still some work remaining to be done. Uh, the latest and greatest update from them is concrete crews were scheduled to work today. Um, that didn't happen, they did work on Friday, and are supposed to be here until it's completed, and then they'll follow with the Boulevard work and, and the reshaping of that, so, and then also the paving of the alley. So I'd expect that work to be completed here in the next two weeks is the, is the schedule that they've been giving me.
They pretty much, as far as digging, the alley is done, as far as they're digging there too, so they're really, the, the heavy dirt work is...
All of the underground work is, is a hundred percent complete, they're just, uh, you know, subcutting out for the sidewalks, driveways, and the alley, and then, uh, castings in the alley, and then getting, getting it put back together, so...
Okay. Okay, any questions on that claim?
Make a motion to approve partial pay estimate number four to OMG Midwest Inc., four hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-one cents.
Motion by councilmember Batchery, second by councilmember Yashewski, to approve the partial pay estimate number four to OMG Midwest Inc. in the amount of four hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-one cents. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Uh, item thirteen, replacement of ambulance doors. Ambulance building doors, not the ambulance.
That scared me to...
Thought they'd get ripped off.
They wrecked the new ambulance already.
Easy driving. Um, yes, you have before you a quote to replace the ambulance building doors? Um, so the quote has been attached for your review.
I was trying to find my way through the scribbling here, and I noticed he refers to a west-facing door, which, which the one is. He also refers to a south-facing door, which it isn't, it's a north-facing door, so, but I'm sure they'll put on the ones that we all have in mind, but, um...
Was this the only bid that we got for this project?
Yes.
As far as I know, it was.
Yes.
We did talk about this a number of months ago.
Yeah, we toured it, I think, right?
Yeah, and, and there was a rough estimate that was thrown, uh, thrown around at that time of approximately five thousand dollars, but we didn't have anything on paper yet for it, so this is just a follow-up on that, and in the intent of getting it done yet this fall, so...
And we did open this up to bids?
I do not know if he sought out any other quotes. At this amount, we would not have had to bid it out, he could just, he could just go out and get bids or quotes, and I don't know that he got any others, I would assume this is the only quote that he saw.
Council's wishes?
I make a motion, we approve the bid for the replacement of the ambulance building doors, uh, for five thousand ninety dollars to Travis Tuckenhagen Construction.
Second.
Okay, motion by councilmember Highland, second by councilmember Cowal, to, uh, move forward with the replacement of ambulance building doors at a, uh, quoted price of five thousand and ninety dollars. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Item fourteen, sanitary sewer capacity and usage level review and options proposal. You're on again, I think, or not?
Right, yeah, absolutely, so...
I didn't want to call you.
No, you're fine.
No, we have to, Jason.
Northland Drying, um, is a company that's looking to locate into the Seneca site, um, for, I think they're gonna be doing some processing of potato peels for dog food, you know, and such, and have some needs for sanitary sewer discharge, which are certainly, uh, more typical of industrial user than a typical user, uh, they're higher strength, uh, waste, um, for their sanitary sewer discharge, and they're looking for the city to accept some of this waste, and, uh, and, uh, really for us to fully understand what capacity the city has, and what capacity the city should designate to Northland Drying. I think we need to, um, review it a little bit further, um, and come up with some options that work for everybody, you know, so that we're not accepting capacity from Northland Drying, and that takes up the rest of the capacity of our plant. That's the last thing that we want to do. We want to make sure that what we have at the plant, that we're being judicious about, you know, who we're giving access to that, and, you know, this could be, we come up and they need, you know, X amount, and that's more than our plant, and therefore we need to increase the size of the plant, not saying that that's the direction we're going, but that's one of the scenarios that may come out of this. Gentlemen from the, from Northland Drying said that they have some various options that they could potentially do on-site to reduce the strength of the waste before we receive that, but I think we really need to hone in on what we can receive and, uh, what those costs would be for accepting that waste, and identify some terms, draft a significant user... and what capacity the city should designate to Northland Drying. I think we need to review it a little bit further and come up with some options that work for everybody, you know, so that we're not accepting capacity from Northland Drying, and that takes up the rest of the capacity of our plant. That's the last thing that we wanna do. We wanna make sure that what we have at the plant, that we're being judicious about, you know, who we're giving access to that. And, you know, this could be, we come up and they need, you know, X amount, and that's more than our plant. And therefore, we need to increase the size of the plant, not saying that that's the direction we're going, but that's one of the scenarios that may come out of this. Gentlemen from the, from Northland Drying said that they have some various options that they could potentially do on-site to reduce the strength of the waste before we receive that. But I think we really need to hone in on what we can receive and what those costs would be for accepting that waste and identify some terms, draft a significant user, significant industrial user agreement so that it's clear for them and the city what is going to be discharged, and we can monitor that and that they can go about their business, and we can go about treating wastewater like we normally do, and everybody's expectations are met. Really, to get a baseline for this, we need to do some investigation, and that's what we have in front of you. About four to five thousand to really hone in on exactly what we have and, and some options that could be discussed when crafting that significant industrial user agreement. I'd expect a meeting and or two with Northland Drying's to really say, this is what we have, does this work with you guys? And, and also maybe even give them some ideas on, on how they could potentially reduce some of the strength of their waste on-site to, to better discharge it so that we can accept it. But we are not in a position right now to really speak intelligently to what we have as far as capacity without doing a little bit of investigation.
Who would be responsible for the cost?
That's why we're, I think we're talking about it here. I think this is certainly a cost that if, if I were the city, would want to roll into a cost to be reimbursed by Northland Drying and outlined in that industrial user agreement and or hookup charge, something on that line. So you're reimbursed for these costs, and I think that's a legitimate request.
Will they have to reroute some of the sanitary sewer in that building in order to hook up to their area?
Potentially, yeah. I haven't seen, I have not seen any schematics as far as any of their proposed plumbing or anything. I have not spoken with them in well over a month on this, so if you give us the go-ahead to at least start these conversations, I think we would wanna have some assurance from Northland that they would be willing to pay for this and, and then probably set up another, you know, short meeting with them and our environmental engineer that would be doing this research, just so that they have the best lay of the land from them on what they would be looking for. They've given us some preliminary numbers, and that document was back in, when it, well, it was dated May sixteenth of two thousand and sixteen. As some of the tests that they ran, they provided that to us. I don't have that email. But it was earlier this year is the last time that we met and started talking about this with them. So April twenty-fourth of seventeen is when we had some discussions with them.
Are we referring to Northland as a potential buyer of that, or has Northland actually finalized the deal? Are they, I don't know.
They mostly closed it on Friday.
Okay, so they are, they are for all practical purposes committed?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
There are just a few loose ends, but I think the deal is done.
Okay.
Are there other facilities in the country or someplace that are similar, that hopefully you'd be able to draw some information?
That's the information that they provided us as far as the, what some of their discharges were from, were from some other, from another facility. It wasn't necessarily from this one, obviously they didn't own it, but this is what they're targeting, in that it's gonna be based on other experi- experiments or research that they've done.
Will they be using a large quantity of water in the processing, or are they drying the moisture out of the potato peelings?
Yeah, I mean, it's essentially the, they'd be drying the potato peels, and with that, there's, you know, some of the byproducts of it which are high in strength. It's a potential, and, and, you know, I'm not gonna tell them their business, but if you have high strengths of waste in there, then there's obviously nutrients in that water. They're probably gonna wanna reduce that as much as they can, because there would be value in those nutrients, and not just flush them down the drain. But again, we're just trying to be open with them and understanding what they wanna discharge. And maybe that is modified even slightly since the last time we had these conversations.
I remember back to when we toured, People Services were talking that they had reduced the, the usage of our tr- treatment plant by like a third or something. We were using all of it and really cut back.
Right.
And so I guess my question is, is do they have numbers on, or information on how much we can take in already? Instead of, not instead of, but in conjunction with what you do, that would save.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Some dollars there.
It's, well, with, all of that information exists. We need to be able to gather that information and then analyze the capacity that's there from the information that we work directly with People Service to get some of those numbers so that we can see how much is open, and then, you know, as far as the future planning of the city, making sure that we're only, you know, if there's a third of it available, we wanna make sure that we know what of that third would make sense and still leaving room for growth within our community. And, and just looking at a couple of options, more than likely be bringing back options to the council, saying, well, we could sell them, you know. All of this leaves us this little bit, or sell them that much that leaves a little bit more, but a couple of options for the city to consider. But absolutely, the, the information that People Service has is, is something that we're gonna collect with this and we're anticipating getting to be able to make the, that review.
I'd like to see us move forward with having Bolden Mink do a study or come up with the information for Northland Drying in their range of costing four to five thousand dollars, and, and hopefully we could recoup the cost from Northland Drying.
That was a motion.
You know, that was a motion.
That was a motion. I will second that motion.
It was a very big one.
It was a motion.
It was a motion.
I don't think we have any choice. I think we have to do it.
Well, it's a potential employer in the industry in this town.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's, when we met with them, I was, I would say, we just need to have more information to be able to speak with them accurately, so that we can make commitments to them and can draft an agreement that works for everybody. And then they can make the best decisions on their behalf on pre-treatment on-site, or, you know, we upgrade the facility here. And they pay for that. Those may be, you know, it's, it comes down to the dollars and cents.
Okay, there's been a motion by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Hattlestead, to have Bolden Mink move forward with the usage level review and at somewhere in the neighborhood of four to five thousand dollar range. Is there any additional comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion is carried.
Jason, if I could, is there a potential that they could haul some of their waste someplace else? You know, like, maybe like the canning factory did where they had the spray fields or?
The, well, permitting to be able to do something like that through the MPCA could be extremely challenging. They're gonna wanna utilize the permit that the City of Arlington has with the MPCA as far as discharging it. Can't say that that's not an option, but it may be a bit challenging. Seneca, when they had theirs, they had their own permit with the MPCA to be able to do that. And, and keeping that permit up is, is not something that everybody would wanna undertake.
Okay. I didn't know if maybe the byproduct could use as feed for hog farm or something.
Potentially, and if they find something for a portion of that, that could be an option that they, you know. But as far as land applying it and things like that, that gets to be, that would be regulated, and they would have to have a permit for that. Not saying that that isn't an option that they could consider, but I would expect working through the city's permit would be, you know, probably more cost-effective.
You got your work cut out for you. Could be a school on the program.
Welcome Officer Sandquist to our meeting. Welcome on board. Okay, then that is, item fourteen is done. We'll move on to item fifteen, approve the twenty-eighteen preliminary tax levy and budget.
Before you, the resolution for the preliminary tax levy, as well as a, a general overview or summary. This has been provided by Tom Olinger, and so tonight, we would be asking that the council would approve the preliminary tax levy. We do have until September thirtieth, so if there is additional time needed, we do have that time. But we do have to have it set by the thirtieth, so that, that number can get to the county and go out in tax statements to notify the public. And just a reminder, the amount that is asked for can be adjusted over the next couple of months through December. But with the caveat that that amount can either stay the same or go down. The levy cannot go up once it has been, the preliminary has been adopted. So that is what we'd be asking for tonight, and then we'll be going through the committees to look at the individual budgets and see if there are additions, changes, revisions to be made prior to that December fourth public hearing and then the subsequent approval by the council.
What percentage are we looking at here as far as the?
Um, I believe.
Two point five.
Is it two point five? I couldn't find it anywhere, but.
Yeah.
Project increase two point five, oh, yeah. Right there.
Oh, projected increase.
But that can be whittled down maybe too.
That's right.
Correct, yep, it can go, yes, again, it can go down, and it can say, it cannot go up once it's set.
So I, I found one, one number that didn't correspond with the other. Up on top there where you have on that first page, on, on the resolution page. General fund, you have at five eighty-seven, six thirty-four, and down here on the proposed, you have five sixty-seven, nine twenty-eight. Is that, I, I'm, I'm questioning that. Under the general, twenty-seventeen, five sixty-seven, nine twenty-eight, and then the one up on the resolution is five eighty-seven, six thirty-four.
Oh, I wonder if that's.
That's twenty thousand dollars or just about, but, but that's, but nineteen seven eighty-four is what we need to cut to keep the same tax rate as last year, so I'm assuming that that's that number maybe, but why would the proposed be?
I would use the, the number from the spreadsheet, just as that's what was provided by Tom.
So the number on the resolution is incorrect?
Yeah, that, I'm thinking what may have happened is a typo when I was transferring over the numbers from the last year's resolution to this year's resolution.
Well, I'd like to introduce resolution number seventy-four twenty-seventeen, resolution setting the preliminary, preliminary tax, twenty-eighteen tax levy, with the correction of the general fund number being five hundred sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and the rest staying the same.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Batcher, second by Councilmember Hattlestead, to approve the twenty-eight, twenty-eighteen preliminary tax levy and budget.
Oh, can I make one more adjustment?
Okay.
The bottom number is eight eleven, eight hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight.
Four twenty-eight, okay.
I wonder if all them other numbers are the same. I guess that one's.
Okay, so we're looking at resolution seventy-four dash twenty-seventeen. The changes again, our general fund should be five sixty-seven, nine twenty-eight. The grand total should be eight eleven, four twenty-eight.
I don't know if those numbers are correct, actually, in the resolution.
Double check, yeah.
Yep, yep, the, where the focus needs to be tonight is on that final dollar amount. So when the resolution, when I go in and correct it, I'll make sure that the resolution reflects these numbers for that bottom dollar amount.
The eight hundred and eleven.
Correct.
Four twenty-eight?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other questions?
I just have a question. In this proposed levy budget, are we considering the, some of the salary increases and so forth? Is that all figured in? Cause.
Yep, and I just noticed the difference. If you look, the spreadsheet is proposed two thousand seventeen. We are looking at two thousand eighteen. So I would use resolution numbers. Is that's last year's numbers? Proposed two thousand seventeen would be for this year's budget.
So it's a forty-eight thousand dollar increase.
Well, then are we missing, we're missing part of the spreadsheet then?
I, yeah, I'm not sure if he had, yeah.
Yep, it looks like we're missing part of that spreadsheet.
Yep.
And then, so we have the amount to keep the tax rate the same, twenty-two, that was from sixteen. Nineteen was from last year, and this year, I don't know how much we have to cut to keep it the same. And I don't know what the projected increase is either, because that's not on there either.
Yeah, I'm not sure if, yeah, I'm not sure if those numbers are reflective of the total.
Before I, I withdraw my motion.
You are, you are withdrawing it?
Yes, I am.
Aw, come on.
Here, I can maybe get it for you real quick, if it's on the spreadsheet that Tom sent to me. There you go. There you go.
Five point nine eight percent.
Yep.
Yeah.
There we go, yeah.
So yes, the resolution, the resolution is, is correct. It's the.
The resolution is correct.
Yes, reflecting those numbers, the proposed numbers.
Are you back on board again?
Yeah, I'm back on.
Let's hurry with it before she changes.
But do I have to take back that other mo- how does that work now?
Yeah, I would withdraw the initial.
Withdraw my initial motion?
Okay.
And instead, would like to, do we have to vote on that or anything?
We, on the withdrawal?
Or not?
No.
Okay, I'll introduce, um, resolution.
We're looking at a three point four seven increase.
Five point.
Five ninety-eight.
Five point nine, yeah, preliminary, yeah.
Yep. Okay.
I'll make a motion, or introduce, uh, resolution number seventy-four twenty-seventeen. A resolution setting the preliminary tax levy of twenty-eighteen, a total tax levy of eight hundred fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-four. Five point nine eight percent projected.
Did I miss anything? I feel like auctioneer, are you gonna?
I'll second that. I think I heard most of it.
So the resolution is as you, as you have it here.
As presented.
Yep, as presented. Okay, Councilmember Batcher introduced a resolution seventy-four dash twenty-seventeen. A resolution setting the preliminary twenty-eighteen tax levy. It was seconded by Councilmember Highland. Is there any further questions? Alright, we're gonna do a roll call. Councilmember Hattlestead?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryszewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Batcher?
Yes.
Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
All in favor, not opposed, resolution's adopted. Alright, move into miscellaneous business, department update, police. Welcome.
There's gonna be a button on there.
You got it. There you go.
There we go. So I'm here on behalf of Pat tonight. Pat got called out, so, no, I think Laura's tackling everything, so. That's what I was told.
Well.
Yeah, well, I see how this works.
Just by word of mouth tonight, Pat told me that the chief background is done and the psych test is tomorrow, so.
Okay, things are moving forward in that area, that's great.
Yep.
And then he thought projected time was middle of, second week of October, so it's a start date, so.
Officer Sandquist has more current updated information than I do, so don't always go to me.
That's word of mouth, that's all tonight, so.
Yeah, no, that's, that's pretty in alignment with what I've heard. We are accepting applications for the police officer position. As of today, we do not have any, so, yeah, yes, I am surprised about that as well. We've been doing some pretty active advertising, so hopefully that will change. Sometimes it, some positions, they just tend to be late, and so it pushes against the deadline. So we'll hope that's, that's the case, and as I always say, we just need one good one, so. So at the very, at the least, but, you know, both myself and interim chief, you know, we'll follow that. And if we need to, either. Nina Barber will follow that and if we need to either extend the deadline or sometimes, you know, an until filled, um, is an option to go to as well, but.
When is the deadline?
The twenty-seventh.
Okay.
We just did a pretty big push this past weekend, so we may not have had time for folks to apply yet.
Okay, all's going well and?
Yep, learning of course, but.
Yep, all right.
Jordan Boyte just left for a different job, so.
Right, so you're on your own, huh?
Me, myself and I.
Not for too long.
Not for too long.
No, we'll get, we're working hard to get you some help.
All right, sounds good.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item seventeen, council member committee updates. Are there any?
Uh, I have a cemetery meeting. Couple of things, Kirby's going to plant some shrubs around the columbarium, um, three different kinds, different colors, um, to kind of make it look nice. The arb- arboretum was planted, I think, by the mayor, um, Rodney Nessie and Kirby.
Yep.
On the property line to kind of separate the cemetery from those houses. Um, the brochure which we approved tonight, and then there has been kids playing in the cemetery and also doing minor vandalism. Some plugs were taken out of the columbarium, um, littering, um, walking on stones, stuff like that. And we weren't really sure what options we had because it's a public cemetery and Kirby has requested more. Police presence and he has noticed that it has gone down, um, since then, but I don't know if they're, we didn't know if they could make an ordinance or something, not have kids. I mean, it's kind of a gray area, but I mean.
What about pushing out to Facebook or something like that? I mean, you know, it's, it, it's a respectful place. I mean, it is a public area, but. But there still needs to be respect that the kids need to learn about, know.
But they're such a fun place to play in. When my kids were, we lived across the street from the cemetery, we would play here all the time.
Especially on Halloween.
I can go seek in the trees and it was fun.
Jeez, really?
Yeah, I don't know, they, they had the time.
Interesting.
Yeah, I think we certainly can do some promotion, you know, the city newsletter also might be an option, you know, maybe even some additional signage, just, you know, that. You know, this is a place of respect and reverence. I think there was even some comment in the columbarium, um, brochure that.
Above that.
Yes, that we can maybe just transfer it to be more proactive versus, you know. To us, you know.
Right, and it would not hurt to have it in, um, other languages other than English.
Oh, mhm.
Yes, that's very important.
Mhm.
And, side note, I don't want to take away from you, but, um, the backside of our newsletter, is there any way that we could have that in Spanish?
I can certainly check. I would think we certainly could.
I think that would be helpful.
Yep, or even reference, you know, have, if we wouldn't have room on the newsletter, reference of, you know, how they could get. A different language or on the website or something, yeah.
Are you saying that?
For, I, for a monthly.
The newsletter is both sides of piece of paper, well, is that, is that what you mean?
Well, see, I always get it in, in emails, so I don't know it's.
The one that's mailed, the one that's mailed out is, it's too sided.
Is it? Okay.
It is too sided, but there's room for an extra piece of paper in there with the same postage.
That would be nice, I mean, I think.
Yeah.
Yep.
There would be.
Yep, I can certainly follow up on that.
I'll have to look at the cemetery chapter. I, I know there are some restrictions on cemetery U, but I'm not sure how tight the language is.
And the key is how to police it too. He can't be there twenty-four hours a day and. I've, I've walked through there a number of times and the kids have been playing around by the columbarium and making mud pies and all that and. Tried to impress on them that, you know, they should play somewhere else, but.
It's close.
Yeah, it's close, so.
And that used to be a park right there.
Pardon?
That used to be a park right there.
Oh, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Right there.
That corner.
Okay, any other?
I had said about, I don't know what it was, two weeks ago, I talked about the cable commission and how we were coming out on that.
Yeah.
Dollar wise, what we were paying versus what we were receiving.
Yep.
Well, without going into the numbers, we are receiving as much or a little more than what we are paying the cable commission annually. I, at the same time, spoke to Kathy Hammy at the library and suggested to her. That if there was more equipment, she just filled out a one grant and I believe received that, that was for two thousand dollars. And I suggested that she send in another one because there are funds available. And I don't know why the cable commission has to have a savings account that large.
Yeah.
So I said, send another one in and I will do everything I can to get it for you.
When you say that large, what number are you?
I don't even know if I want to say that in public.
I think that's one thing that bothers me is here, it's, it's a, it's an agency that is a public agency. It's not, I mean, it's taking the public's money and, and.
I can't say the exact amount, but I'd say in the two and about one fifty.
Yeah.
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
And I have con- some other concerns about that, but the.
So how do we, how, in what forms does the city receive?
The city, the schools, the public school, um, and this got up this year, but I believe they got seven thousand. Saint Paul Lutheran, two thousand, and the library, two thousand dollars. And of course you have to factor in what we spoke, got spent in here.
Yeah, with our.
It was quite a few dollars there. And we paid to them about fifteen thousand a year.
Okay.
And that goes up and down quarterly, more times up than down, according to the information Annie gave me. I just get a little concerned with. There's times when items get passed that are very beneficial to. All the people that, the communities that have RS fiber. And that's why I started digging into this because we do not, the Gaylord Winthrop and Gibbon have RS fiber, so when they pass something that's beneficial for. Those three communities, not so much for Arlington. We kind of lose out in that end. So I thought, I need to dig into this a little bit and see if we're, so I'm just, and I'm probably going to talk to the school in, in Saint Paul's. I don't know if I'll talk to Don and tell him to pop in, I said, there's no guarantee they're going to get it. But I've seen other people send in for higher dollar amounts, organizations, and they have received it. And I know the money's there, so. I don't think that that group was put together to have a savings account. By any stretch of the imagination, and if there is that many funds available, I'm not sure why, then. The bill to Arlington has to continually go up, well, every other community seems like it goes up. Well, if we have that much money in the checkbook, why, there's not a shortage of funds. That account is growing.
Yeah.
And they, you know, short of maybe updating some of their server equipment, you know, they could spend fifty grand there. But there's still, uh, another hundred thousand dollars sitting there.
How is our, uh, the volume issue with people watching this on?
I haven't heard anything bad.
Have you, has there been some improvements made that?
Yeah, they, they did a bunch of changing and when I go to YouTube.
Yeah.
That's where I go to watch it. If everybody speaks like this, it's just fine. But if we're sitting in the council meeting, talking back here, it's not so fine.
Pick it up.
So I think the key is as long as we all speak here.
Telling you.
The volume is very good, but if we're a ways away, don't pull our mics up behind the notebooks.
Yep.
But yeah, it's got better.
Okay.
How much I can't say.
Yeah, I have not heard.
I don't know, has there been any complaints in the last month?
Not that I've heard.
Not that I've heard either, so.
I think it's gotten, I think it's gotten better. If we're not getting any complaints, I think, okay.
Yep.
Good.
And I think a lot of it's on us right here. That's probably the biggest key.
Okay. All right, any other items under that? Council member committee updates?
We had a EDA meeting last week. We, uh, were visited by Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. And they talked a little bit about what you spoke of tonight during our meeting, uh, daycare and the need for it in Sibley County. And how it's just Arlington, I think, is the worst, uh.
Biggest shortage.
Biggest shortage, absolutely, by, by far out of all the communities in Sibley County. Um, and then we also had, uh, Amy Newsom that, um, talked about an initiative program for Sibley County Rural Childcare.
Okay, any news on the TSE building yet? There's anything moving on that?
Um.
As far as?
Same old news, just waiting, waiting for.
No potential buyers have stepped up since then, all right. Okay, open discussion, anything?
I was just going to follow up on, um. Did you talk to, uh, Brinkman on the trees at all time?
Yes, I talked to him, uh, the day after the last council meeting and I had a forty-five minute conversation with him today. Um, I think he might go looking tomorrow. Do we know if that agreement that Ross was drawing up is completed?
I've been trying to get a hold of him just to verify the facts, so I'll try him again tomorrow.
I think, were they out of town for a little bit?
They were up in Canada fishing.
Oh, okay.
For about five days.
Oh, yeah, okay, that explains it.
That's why, but he's home now, well, at least he was home when I talked to him at one o'clock today.
Okay.
Woke me up out of my nap.
I seen Deb yesterday, so they must be around here.
But I think he planned on going today or tomorrow up to the place that the estimates came from to, uh, see what he could get.
My understanding is the council authorized up to one thousand and fifty dollars for two trees of their selection.
On the list.
On the list.
On the city list, correct. He's got that list.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? If not, motion is in order to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by council member Batch, or seconded by council member Haddelsted to adjourn the meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Meeting is adjourned, seven thirty-three.